The time is nine nine A M. The day is June first, twenty twenty one. Uh, we were called to order the meeting of the State's Oral City Council. We will have our invitational pledge of allegiance by Councilmember John Riz.
Um, thank you. Uh, first I'd like to remind everybody, I don't know if you heard, um, one of my employees, uh, her daughter, seventeen year old daughter was, uh, killed in a car crash on Wednesday. And, um, I just want to ask thoughts and prayers to be for her, anyone that hadn't heard about that. It was also, uh, last Wednesday was a pretty bad day. You know, uh, Marty Waters, his son, his son drowned that day.
Sunday.
It was a rough day for State Spur last, last week. Um, anyway, just wanted everybody to keep that in mind. And, uh, now this is about what it is. Lord, thank you for, uh, the opportunity for us to be here, to be Americans, to be grown up in this, uh, in this wonderful country that gives us so many, so many opportunities. Um, uh, thank you so much for the men and women who have died and fought to make, to give us those freedoms today. And, um, uh, keep them in your hearts. I know it's Memorial Day is just one day, but, uh, but it's something we should think about every day of the year. Um, and that, uh, also include our, all of our first responders. I appreciate them, uh, because of them working yesterday, me and most of the folks in the country get to take yesterday off. Uh, so thank you to the first responders. Um, God bless y'all. Uh, we ask that you please guide us today as we, uh, talk about important things, uh, for the future of the city. And, um, in Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our real significance in the item three, recognition of public presentations, uh, presentation of a proclamation for Pride Month. Uh, the proclamation reads as follows, uh, proclamation by the mayor and city council of State Spur, Georgia, for Pride Month. Whereas our nation is founded on the principle of equal rights for all people. But the fulfillment of this promise has been long, lo- long in coming for many Americans. Some of the most inspiring moments in our history have arisen from the various civil rights movements that have brought one group after another from the margins of, of the mainstream of American society. And whereas in the movement towards equal rights for lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender people, a historic turning point occurred on June twenty eighth, nineteen sixty nine, in New York City with the onset of the Stonewall riots. During the riots, the LGBT citizens rose up and fought against discriminatory criminal laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. And whereas the LGBT Pride celebrations have taken place around the country every June to commemorate the beginning of the Stonewall riots. And whereas June is celebrated as LGBT Pride Month nationwide. Whereas State Spur has a diverse LGBT community that includes people of all ethnicities, religions, and professions. And whereas everyone should be able to live without fear of prejudice, discrimination, violence, and hatred based on race, religion, gender, identity, or sexual orientation. Now therefore, it be resolved that the city of State Spur, uh, on behalf of all residents of State Spur, does hereby proclaim June twenty twenty as Pride Month. And the city of State Spur urges all residents to respect, honor those diverse communities, and celebrate and both, and build a culture of inclusiveness and acceptance, adopted this first day of June, twenty twenty one. Thank you. We'll move down to agenda item four, which is public comments. Clear any public comments?
No, Mayor.
Okay. We'll move down to agenda item five, consideration of a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is, uh, is, is there a motion to approve the work session minutes and council minutes from May eighteenth? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we'll move down to agenda item six, consideration of a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty one dash twenty, a resolution to adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty two budget for each fund of the city of State Spur, Georgia appropriating the amount shown in each budget as expenditures and expenses, adopting the several items of revenue anticipations and prohibiting expenditures or expenses from exceeding the actual funding available for appro- appropriation. Uh, are, is there any additional comments, Mr. Penney?
Mayor, members of council, I would like to just make one correction. Uh, at the last meeting we had, the public hearing, and I stated a number for the record. And that number said that our budget was going to be seventy-three million, eight hundred thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars. And I'm glad to report the actual number is sixty-nine million, one hundred fifty-two thousand, fourteen dollars. So I need to correct the record.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Penney. Is there a motion to approve?
Some.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we'll move down to agenda item. Oh, any opposed?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, John. Um, uh, move down to agenda item seven, consideration of a motion to award a contract for baking services to Senovis for a four-year term. Uh, Mr. Penney, any insight on that?
Mayor, members of council, we do have, um, I believe on Zoom or airroom, uh, Doug, Doug Gierpart and Ricardo, um, from Davenport, just in case you have any questions. Um, we've gone through the bid process and, and we talked about it in the work session. So we do recommend award a contract to Senovis for baking services.
Okay, thank you. Alright, is there a motion to approve?
Some.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We move down to a generate, uh, agenda item eight, consideration of a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty one dash twenty one, a resolution to adopt a maximum tariff rates by tolling, uh, and storage operators engaged in non-consensual towing. Mr. Penney, want to give us some insight on that?
Mayor, members of council, uh, I think your, the last time these rates were adjusted was back in two thousand seventeen. And, and what we are recommending is that, uh, council consider just mirroring the state fees. Uh, and, and, and we also recommend that this go into effect on July first. Uh, therefore, our public would be put on notice that, uh, if their car is towed, instead of paying a hundred and fifty dollars, they'll be paying a hundred and seventy-five dollars, uh, and, and accordingly. And so we do recommend to, to this morning, that council would consider, uh, mirroring the state fees, uh, for tolling.
Alright, thank you. Is there any discussion by council?
Actually, I do have just a comment to make, and I didn't get, check this out in advance. On why did you State Spur High School graduation, I saw a social media post about people who got towed when they parked along in front of doctor's offices and such near State Spur High School. The media post said, I mean, they knew, it was a group of folks who came together. So the person who was posting said they knew a lot of the car owners. And that the tow drivers apparently targeted the older, more beat up cars and left the newer cars. And the assumption was that the folks driving the older cars would have more, more difficulty coming up with the towing fee. And that way they would accumulate more of the storage charges, which is really sad, you know, that somebody would, it would cost somebody extra money like that to attend a high school graduation. So I don't know if there's anything we can do about it, but I was just concerned to read that.
Do we know that's what they did, or is that just speculation?
I don't have an answer, and if they were taking towing them out of, uh, those parking lots, they own private property. And so we wouldn't be controlling that, but we control the fees and that would be just kind of, uh, unless Chief, Chief of the Word, Benny.
So my understanding is that the tow company, is that the tow driver's discretion, if the sign is up in the lot, and somebody parks there, the tow drivers can ride around and see that and tow cars at their discretion. It's not up to the owner to call and notify them, I need you to go tow somebody. Is that correct?
That's right. We require a signature from someone, from the management person on scene before they can move their car to private property.
And it's the tow driver?
Uh, the management company who's there has to sign a slip allowing the tow truck driver to take that, that car off of private property.
So you're saying manager, so you're saying a property management?
To property, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, the property management at the physical location has to sign a slip for the tow truck driver to make sure the tow truck driver doesn't get in trouble for a non-consensual towing.
For each individual car?
Yes, sir.
They have to be on, on, I mean, somebody has to be available eight to nine, eight to five to, uh, sorry.
Jenna, you want to?
John, you up here? I mean, Jenna represents the, the towing company, so she might have some different insight. But what we want to do is try to avoid these situations where tow truck drivers do have the, uh, the discretion to make those decisions. So we require a property manager, owner, security guard, somebody on behalf of the management to summon them and say, I need these four cars towed, pulling those cars out. Then they get a tow slip, so then when they're towing that car away, no one can accuse them of stealing that car because the management is the one who's requesting the tow.
And so you, you said something that was perfect, just the, the management company points out what, what vehicles, okay. So it was not, so, okay. So that gives a little bit more clarity?
It does.
Okay.
A lot of the public doesn't realize that. So when they post things like that, they make us look bad, and that's not necessarily the case. Um, most of the time, like he said, an owner, property manager, security guard, whatever, will say, hey, I mean, these cars were moved.
And have to sign a slip for each one.
And they have to sign a slip for each one.
So it is back on the property owner rather than the tow truck driver?
Right.
And the tow company?
But we don't often, we don't often tell the public, you know, how that works because of retaliation. Um, don't want it coming back on somebody else, and we just kind of deal with it.
Gotcha. Thank you for the information. Thank you, Chief.
Can I just, so then should those slips be available somewhere? In other words, if, if, if somebody, in this case, let's just say it was a zealous tow truck driver who just decided to do it on their own, is, are those slips required? And if they don't have that slip, should they have to pay? It's an unauthorized tow, correct?
That's right. And there's a, there's a thousand dollar fine associated with unauthorized consensual towing. Uh, we can opt them. When people make complaints, we'll go to the tow company and say, I need to see the record of this and check for a signature from the manager personally.
So there you go, sharing that if anybody has a concern, they can have a check.
Yeah, can contact the police department and say, I was towed. Can you confirm for me that this was actually authorized?
Yes, ma'am, that's right.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Um, let me ask another question, if you don't mind. Um, the current towing rates, um, and then the current state towing rates, um, how did y'all come up with one fifty, one seventy-five?
That's, that's the state.
That's the state, uh,
The state, the one seventy-five, the state.
That's the state. That's top state rate. Can't go higher than that. That's, that's on us. If that's what you're going.
And I agree, it's top.
One fifty, Mr. Penney.
It has been one fifty, and now we're going.
It's currently one fifty.
And this, this will prove it to one seventy-five. Okay. That's all I wanted to know, just curious.
Okay. And, um, any further questions? I can see that there's none. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, let's move down to agenda item nine, consideration of a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty one dash twenty two, a resolution requesting approval to apply for law enforcement mental health awareness act grant, uh, for the city of State Spur. Uh, Mr. Penney?
Mayor, members of the council, this is a cooperative opportunity for us to apply for a grant through the, uh, US Department of Justice, also community policing, for a hundred and four thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. And it's to deal with mental health for law enforcement officers as well. So we will be working with, uh, the Bull County Sheriff's Department and Georgia Southern University, uh, if we are awarded the grant. So today we're just asking for your permission to be able to apply for these funds. And we would recommend that we be allowed to submit the grant.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Penney. Any insight for council or any discussion?
Sure, I'd ask it. Who, who, um, who will be, who will be teaching the, uh, the mental health, is that George Southern? And a lot of this I already know.
Yeah, okay, that's why I wanted to know.
No problem.
It's, it's, thanks for the question, Councilman Mayor. Uh, it's a part of the national, uh, training curriculum. And we're going to send our training sergeant and some other instructor level folks that have served at the state instructors to that training, and then we're going to push it out to all of our folks, sheriff's officers, those G S U folks, and families. And that will help them to understand some of the effects of dealing with PTSD and dealing with critical incidents, those kind of things. So hopefully just work on everybody's wellness and make sure that our folks stay as healthy as they can.
Okay, um, I guess what I was thinking was, um, when I saw George Southern University, I wasn't thinking of the Georgia Police Department. I wasn't thinking, I was thinking they were going to teach it because they have, obviously, you know, the doctrines over there on the mental health, so. So, so, so where's the training? Where, where are they going to send it?
Honestly, I honestly don't know. Uh, so the training sergeant's been working on the grant, and, and they also have been working cooperatively with the, there's like a tactical medicine group in the kinesiology department at G S U who, who already works our folks, trains them physically. And, and they're going to continue to work on this with us and get cross-trained as well, so we can have sort of a non-law enforcement perspective in, in, in the training curriculum, if that makes sense. So, um, Dr. Melton and her folks, uh, they do an awesome job over there, and they've been working with us at our gym and the fire department for a couple of years, and we're just continuing that relationship with them.
It sounds like there's a component to enhance the mental health of the staff, officers, as well as trying to have a better deal with the public.
Um, thank you, Councilman. The, so C I T training is what we use to understand and, and work with mentally ill people in the community. Mental health first aid is for us to begin ourselves and each other to be a little bit mindful of things you're feeling and why are you feeling that. And so it's really more self-first aid and family-first aid and not really related to the public, if we use C I T training for that.
C I T stands for crisis intervention training?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussions by council? I can see that there's none. Is there a motion to approve?
Some.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
I can move down to agenda item eighteen, consideration of a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty one dash twenty three, a resolution initiating voter referendum to authorize issuance of licenses for the package sale of distilled spirits. Yeah, I'll go to Pat.
Mayor, council, I'm sorry. This is a, um, this is a resolution to initiate a ballot referendum. A voter referendum to be held on, uh, November second, authorized issuance of licenses for, uh, for liquor stores, basically. And, um, the, um, the background impetus for this is the re- very recent amendment of A C G A three, four, forty-one. This was actually enacted on, um, on May fourth, just, uh, just a few weeks ago. But what it did is, it was amended to allow referendum elections to be authorized, um, to be initiated upon passage of a local, uh, resolution by the governing authority of any municipality or county. Tell you a couple other things about three, four, forty-one. The other amendment was that it lowered the petition threshold from thirty-five percent of the number of registered voters to twenty percent. And it also maintained the, uh, two-year prohibition between ballot referendums. So, um, so that they can't be constantly petitioned or, um, resolved to be held by the, by, uh, the governing authority. So those are the two things it did, was the, was the local resolution and, uh, lowered the petition threshold.
Okay. Alright, thank you, council. Any discussion by council?
Uh, yes. Kane, there was about a state, the state passed that, that is O C G A?
That's correct. It was, it was, uh, signed by Governor Kemp on May fourth afternoon.
Is this kind of like what Nathan Deal did? Nathan Deal, when, uh, uh, when he became governor, um, people asked him, uh, liquor by the drink on Sunday. Well, he said, I'm not touching that for ten foot hold. So he, so he signed something similar to this, allowing municipalities and counties to, uh, uh, put on a referendum, make it on, make our own decision when it's to him signing something. He said, I'm not touching that. So anyway, it was kind of like, I almost say it was a mandate, but it.
It's a local, it was a focus on local control. So yes, this is another step towards local control.
And this is simple, this is, uh, similar to that?
It's extremely similar to it. It has the same sort of dictated ballot question that the Sunday sales law did as well. Um, you know, you can only put the question that is on the resolution on the ballot, um, just that very simple question. It's the same way it was with those Sunday sales. It was, it was, shall Sunday sales be permitted? And in this case, it's, shall the issuance of licenses for package sales of distilled spirits be approved? I mean, and that's just all there is. It's just a very simple question about whether it should or shouldn't. And it's the exact same.
When did our Sunday sales referendum pass?
Our Sunday sales referendum, I believe, passed, I mean, I think, I think it was before that, Councilman Boy. I think it was, I think it was, um,
It had to have been a year, Nathan Deal.
I think it may have been two thousand twelve is when we had the Sunday sales. Because I remember we got Sunday sales in package stores and in restaurant, or not in package stores, but like in convenience stores and in restaurants on the same day. Um, and I believe that was, that was in two thousand twelve. And I believe the liquor by the drink went into effect in nineteen ninety. That was done the same way as by, um, by a council resolution followed by voter referendum. Those other two as well. And I believe we did the same thing with the brunch bill as well. When, when the sun, we also had to do a ballot referendum for that, so we.
That was just a three or four years ago, right?
I guess it's been since I've been here, that's correct. I believe Councilman Rick has initiated that.
No, it was Councilman Boy.
Um, you voted for it, hasn't it?
Um, was, um, uh, was that brunch bill, was that also something that was signed by the state saying, I'm not touching that and y'all can take care of it? Is, is that, was that kind of?
All, all three of those are, are, were seen as local control initiatives, that the state is divesting themselves of the, the overarching, uh, you know, regulation and saying, cities, this is up to you. So Savannah, you want to do brunch, you want to do whatever. It gives the local communities the option to do what's best for them.
Offer your seminar.
Correct.
Gotcha, just curious.
And this one's the same way, driven largely by, uh, cities up in Cobb County.
Gotcha.
Um, any further discussion by, um, council?
Yes, um, who is going to decide or when, if we put this on the ballot and it says simply, like you said, should I issue licenses for the package sales of dist- distilled spirits? If we pass that, then when are we going to make up the, the laws deciding who can get a license? Uh, where you can put your store, uh, that kind of stuff.
That's a very good question. Obviously, those, those discussions have not been had what the ordinance would look like. Um, and we would need to have that discussion just based on, we have it the same manner we would with, for any code of ordinance as revision, because that's what it would, that's what this law would allow us to do, is to amend the ordinance in order to issue those liquor store licenses.
Gotcha.
Thanks.
So if this does pass today by council, is there a way that we can get, um, the public's input before it's voted on so that everybody knows, or is that something that has to happen after the fact?
There's, there's no legal prohibition on discussing what the ordinance would look like or having any sort of public input in the interim or after it passed to see what the, um, and of course, we would have to have public hearings in order to, um, to enact the ordinance that would follow, um, the ballot referendum. So there's no prohibition on when those discussions are incurred.
Okay.
Any further discussion by council?
Well, I have mixed feelings about this. I'm interested in hearing if other council members have, have thought about this more or have, uh, something they'd like to share about it.
Hey, for about an hour's in our ordinances, it's time.
Thank you, Mr. Boy.
I think people are going to, they're giving money out to different counties. I think that we should try to take a, you know, a stab at this and see how it goes and let the voters vote.
Gotcha. Thank you.
All those are very valid points. Um, you called nasty yesterday, what I thought you said was you've got a lot more experience. No, you called and said you've got more experience with this. Uh, and so does Phil. Alcohol is the most divisive issue that we will ever come across, that I can remember about. And Phil used to be the reporter, now Al is, and we've all been, we all know that alcohol is just, uh, it's a lightning rod. Um, I believe we would need at least a year of work sessions, inviting the public before we even thought about putting it on the.
A year?
Uh, yes, yes, I do, a year. Because believe me, you're going to hear, you're going to hear it all. And it all needs to be heard, from all sides. Um, and I think, uh, I think this is, I think this is rushing it. And, uh, um, I would hate for it to be put on there and not pass, and then have to wait two more years. Y'all can do it again next year. But it, it, it needs at least a year of discussion from everybody. And everyone, everyone needs to be invited. Um, that's my thought.
Any further discussion by council?
Yes, that kind of echoes my concern. I hope I hear and understand, like, we're behind the times. For a city our size, there's so few of us left in Georgia who don't allow this. Why are we letting counties around us have the money? So I'm open and sympathetic to that argument. And I don't like doing things fast. Watch the rush. Um, if, if I just heard about this last Thursday, that we could, that it would be on the agenda today. Um, so maybe not a year, but at least a few months is what I'm thinking, to have, to hear from people whether they're ready for this to come to a vote here in Bull County, um, in the city of State Spur.
And that's why Kane and I kind of posed that question, could we do it before it went to the vote? If we vote on it today, we would have a couple of months to hear what people have to say. And then we'll see what they have to say when they go to the ballots and vote.
That's, this is the whole, you talk about wanting to hear what the people have to say. That's what this is. The referendum is a way for every single person in the city to have their voice. And as John said, alcohol can be a divisive issue. There's a lot of judgment with people who even just, you know, consume it recreationally or occasionally even. There's a lot of judgment. And there's a lot of people afraid to come here and make their real opinions now. And when these last three referendums came up, very few people stood up and said things positively because they were afraid to. And yet, all three of these referendums passed two-thirds. So, I mean, clearly, um, clearly, we need to move forward. As for time, John? I mean, we've already got a, a, a regularly scheduled city council election. We wait till next year, now our city council election gets muddled up with the governor's race and the house races. So if we're going to focus on what the city of State Spur really wants, let's do it this year when it's a city election. And we've got six months between, if we pass it now before it turns up on the ballot, we can write the ordinance before then, or we can wait until after the, uh, the voters. It's, it's either way. But as far as asking, hearing from the public, this, this is what hearing from the public is. So if you want to wait and do the ordinances till after November, that's fine. But this is a way to hear directly from the public. So, and we got six months. So I think that's plenty of time.
So if the resolution, if we pass this resolution, we're saying, put it on the next available ballot for the local citizens to vote whether or not they want us to figure out how to offer liquor for sale in State Spur.
Yes, and that was specifically being November second, twenty twenty one. And, uh, Mr. Penney just asked me a question. I, I believe I do need to share the answer with y'all. And that would be, when would, um, when would the last time we, we could take action on this in order to get on the November ballot? And that would be the second, uh, July meeting. I just want to share that with council.
The July meeting?
So, so, so tell me this, if this waited to the second July meeting, we could still get public input? Because I don't think it should be waiting a long time either, because we've been waiting forever. We have. But I don't think it should be rushed either. So my question is, if we waited to that second July meeting, would that be enough time to get public information or pub, for the public opinion?
I don't think, yeah.
That's what I'm asking.
Could, could we ask, uh, Kane if he could, um, afford that date, if he could, um, come up with a rough draft? Uh, you know, uh, you know, you, you, oftentimes you'll look at other cities and what they have and, you know, if you have enough time to.
Of course.
Look through those and, and kind of give us, uh, you know, what you think. And then, I would like to see it posted as soon as possible, so everybody can, everybody can look at it.
I do too.
You know, I want to offer, uh, a moment of, 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 of clarity and transparency on this. There was another mayor outside of the Cobb County area that was working on getting, um, the municipalities a option to be able to vote on this by a simple council up or down vote, and that was me. So I'm very, I, I understand this inside and out. We work with G M A, we work with state senators, we work with state representatives to get more local control on this particular topic. And the whole idea of working on it was for us to be able to do this in such a way where we are able to get public input on this. And through. And through this process, what I envisioned, uh, was for us to be able to do a work session. So the council can, so that the staff can bring to the council what other communities are looking, what other communities are doing. And then the council is open to do, have an open and free conversation about what we would like to have here. Some of the conversations that I, we've had in and around this is, is it going to be a liquor store on every corner? Will it be regulated, will it be a certain number? Were incomes that's been historically disadvantaged by, um, uh, package stores being in their communities? Are we going to put in any precautions in regards to that? Uh, there's a huge amount of discussion, uh, that needs to be had in and around this. And historically, I would say it has had a huge issue when it comes to alcohol. So in my opinion, I'm, I'm of the opinion of John, I'm of the opinion of Sherry, I'm of the opinion of Paulette. Statesboro has not had alcohol sales in one hundred years, in one hundred years. I, I didn't interrupt anybody, I expect the same courtesy. What, what does it, the next time we can put this on the, on the ballot is May twenty-four. We can take our time, the staff does not have to be rushed. The people of the city who's, who's reaching out to me and saying that they feel that this is being rushed, they feel that there's been some, there's been a lack of transparency in this conversation. And so there's no need to rush, and there's going to be more people to participate in the May twenty-fourth election than it is the city. The municipal race has a historically low turnout rate. So that's not the best measure of what the people, what most of the people want in the city. The best measure is to get it in the, on the ballot where most of the people come out. And in that way, that's where we really get a, a, get a good idea of what the people really want. And so we know that the mail election is going to be a huge primary, and we're going to get a greater swath of the people that's within this community. And then it, it, it allows us to do, to create public po, policy of, that's of a sensitive nature in a transparent, open way, so that the entire community, you know, this is just not about work sessions. On this topic, we need to have three town halls, we need to have two town halls during the week, we need to have a town hall on a Saturday, so that the people, so that we can build those town halls around individual schedules, so that they are able to participate. If we waited a hundred and, a hundred years, we can waste six months to, to do it the right way. And that's what public policy is about, that's my feel on it. Um, the council can, the council can make the decision that they, that they want to, um, and we'll go in the direction that the council wants. But in my opinion, we should have, we should have a work session where the staff was able to tell us about what other communities are doing. We were able, we're able to put together our ordinance that reflects the city of Statesboro. We open it up for three town halls where we operate two during the week, one on the weekend, so that they can be able to get it. Then we bring it up to a first reading, um, and then once we get that first reading, the people know exactly what they're voting on when they go to the vote, and it's not rushed. So that, that's, that's my take on it.
Um, any further discussion by council?
Kane, what was the, that you said, the latest statement that could be voted on by council?
The, um, barring a, a special call meeting of council, it would be the second July meeting. Um, whatever, if a resolution is, um, is passed for a ballot referendum, we need to have that to the Board of Elections by August first.
By August the first.
In order to go and remember that.
Yes, in order for, so by August the first, we're not going to be able to tell the public what they need.
I am, I am, I am, anyone, so please, Kane, can you answer the question?
Right, the, the, Councilman Mac, in order to put it on the November second ballot, we would need to have it into the Board of Elections, Bull County Board of Elections by, um, by August first. So unless a special call meeting was done later, the, uh, last time during a regular meeting that could be approved to be on that November ballot would be the second July meeting.
July twenty.
July twenty. Thank you, Mr. Kane.
Further discussion by council?
So my question is, is that enough time for us to get this out to the public? Staff?
Kane, do you mind, do you mind my?
The council, Councilwoman Shae was having a question on the floor.
Well, I was going to answer her question.
No, she said staff.
No, she didn't, but okay.
Yeah, she did.
I said staff.
Well, go ahead, go ahead, Kane.
I mean, we, I could certainly do a survey, see what existing, um, ordinances look like during that time. Um, I don't, whether or not that's enough discussion to be had is a decision I would have to make. I, I simply don't know, but as far as time constraints on me about whether or not I can get y'all some ideas by then, I absolutely can.
And, and as far as scheduling public meetings, we'll do whatever council directs us to do. It's sufficient time, the only, the only thing I would just say, remember we are dealing with summertime. And folks our way, uh, and, and so, but, but today's June first, we can get meetings scheduled, we can do town halls, we can do whatever you like. Uh, but it, we'll be pushing it with, um, with.
But you can do it, that's what you're saying.
Yes.
You can do it. So it's a tough one.
Ms. Mayor, I know this isn't a public hearing, but it is a public venue, a public meeting.
Oh, yeah, I'm going to open it up, I got it.
Okay, yeah, that's what I would like to, the people here, we can give everybody the work.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this topic? Pro or? Yeah.
Well, I'm speaking as a concerned citizen.
We need you to come to the podium, stay tuned.
I'm looking as a concerned citizen and a liquor store owner. I think that, you know, I understand, my daddy was the one that, um.
Come to the microphone.
Man, we have to have to.
I'm sorry, Pam Hodges, we on the county line. Um, so our concern is, I mean, we're ready to do whatever, you know, but I think there is a lot of discussion. And we've been through this for all my life of my dad saying what all went on prior to and what's going on now. But I think we need to know the rules of what's going on. I, I think we need to know, is it only going to be one liquor store? Is it going to be one on every corner? Is it going to be a lottery system? I mean, you know, you got, we need to know more information, and I think, I only, I'm speaking for myself, I'm thinking, I spoke to others that, you know, are the same way, they want to know what the rules are going to be. So that's why I'm, I'm liking the idea that y'all take the time to research and, and, you know, check things out of what needs to be done and how it needs to be handled. And that's just my thought, but I, you know, I just think that more discussion, it just seemed like it was rushed, and I, and not that we're against anything. I'm just saying that I just think we need more time to see what the rules are and how, how we're going to play it.
Ms. Art, Ms. Art, if you live in Bull County, don't.
We do.
And we always have, I mean, y'all, my family knows y'all's family from way back. But, uh, but you're saying that if we do, did pass this and it came out on the ballot and it passed, y'all would be probably the first one to open up liquor stores, wouldn't you?
I hate to say it started at our age, but, you know, that. Start all over again, but I do want to say that I understand, you know, that you're wanting the revenue for accounting and stuff. I'm not sure how much matter gets on, count, kind of gets on a package store, I have no idea on that, but, um, everything we make comes back into this county. We've been supporters of Georgia Southern since nineteen eighty-three, um, we're a member of the Chamber of Commerce. We, you know, every, we own property here, I mean, everything we do, the money comes back in, so it hasn't been so bad for y'all, but anyway, that's my thoughts.
And so if we vote on it today, the discussion cannot happen?
Yep.
That's what I'm, can, can the discussion still happen even if it's voted on today? Or does the discussion stop because we moved it?
It would be on council directive whether or not to, to do any of that. Uh, that would be up to y'all entirely, and of course, there's, and there is no prohibition on, on that discussion before or after the resolution, or before or after the ballot referendum.
Kane, can I ask you a question?
Councilman, uh, Boy on the desk floor.
Uh, one, this resolution that we have here does nothing other than put the question on the ballot for the voters, correct?
That's correct.
Does it give us permission to issue licenses without an ordinance?
Yeah, absolutely not.
Okay, so we follow, what, if this is passed in November, at that point, we would have to craft an ordinance, or we could craft an ordinance beforehand. You can do it either way. Either way, though, uh, no alcohol licenses can be issued without an ordinance being written and passed by the council, correct?
Absolutely correct.
All right, and our current ordinance process requires us to have a minimum of two public hearings for a first reading and a second reading, and the second reading only, no significant changes have been made since the first, is that correct?
Actually, it should be subject to the work session requirement as well, so I believe it would be a work session and then two, two council public hearings, they're general.
Minimum.
Right.
Because we, as we know, a bunch of ordinances here have passed in the past year, year and a half, have gone to three meetings, even four sometimes, correct? So plenty of public opportunity, public, plenty of time. The only thing that has to be sent to the Board of Education is whatever was written in there, except for the law. To the Board of Elections, I'm sure.
That's, that's correct, state law, um, OCGA three, four, forty-two mandates that singular question with nothing more, nothing less.
So we, so in other words, we, 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 once the referendum is passed, again, until ordinances are fully written, uh, so we can take into consideration, I think, all the considerations that, that the mayor had, I think all those things.
No, not exactly, so for me, this is, for me, when we, when we send this to the public to say, we, this is what's going to be on the ballot, we don't have enough time to craft all of that by August one and then put it in. We're still going to be working on that beyond that August. So the timeframe that they get the chance to, the, 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 to understand what that, what that vote, yea or nay means is going to be shortened tremendously. The, the, my thought process to keep this abundantly transparent with everyone is that we pull the, we, we take the time, craft the legislation so that the people know exactly what they're voting for, and they have enough time to understand exactly what they're voting for. And so if we're trying to rush to hurry up, by August one, this legislation is not going to be crafted, but it's going to be on the ballot. And so we're still trying to craft something that's all, that's on the ballot, and people are still trying to get it, and then once we craft it, now we got to take, now we got to put it, push it out to the public so that they know what's going on. And so my question is, why the rush for that ballot? When we, we've got, we've got a, we've got a primary in March, and then another general election in November. So why, why is it a rush to get it on that particular ballot?
We'll have to pay for a primary in, in, uh, May. We're already, we already have an election scheduled for November.
We have an election scheduled for May twenty-four.
No, we have a county election, that's not the same as this state election.
No, no, it's a primary statewide, it's going to have, historically, that is the election where most people, where most people turn out. So if you want a good representation, you got to have, you, you will put it on the ballot where most of the people are going to turn out.
The districts are different, Mayor, the county districts are not the same as the city district. So you, it's the same, when we ran in two thousand twelve, don't you remember? You had to vote in the city election at your city precinct, and then you had to vote in the county election in the county precinct.
Phil, that has no bearing on it. Phil, that has no bearing.
I don't want to go there.
I'm, the city district is different, you will not vote in your county, you'll have, it'll be a separate.
Phil, what does that have to do with turnout?
It means on May, you'll have to vote twice, and it also means that the students will be gone. Why not do it in November on our regular election when the students will be here? And all the residents that are supposedly here, they're such a part of our community, why not, why leave them out of the discussion? My point being is, is that if you do it in May, it's got a special call of election, and we'll have to pay an additional fee for it because the county districts are not the same. District one that I live in in the city is not the same as District six, city district.
I mean, you're saying, but it's not, but it has no bearing, it has no bearing at all, Phil.
So, Councilwoman Mac?
One, I don't even remember what I was going to say, guys, but. You said with the, with the rush, I wanted to go for that. I feel that the rush is that it's just time. This is something that I had, when I ran my campaign and I was knocking on doors, I was asking people what did they want to see? The two biggest things that people said, the first one was from Park Place, they wanted mailboxes. And I told them, I don't know if I'm going to be able to get them mailboxes, but I did try. And the second thing was that we need alcohol, we need alcohol stores. And I told them that I didn't know if I was going to be able to do that either, but I will try, and now is my time to try. And like Phil said, in May, I didn't even think about that. Half of my district will not be here in May to vote if we did it for May. I do not want to rush anything. I am from a fast city, so I do like things fast, but I just think that it's time. It is time for us, everybody says, oh, Statesboro, we want to grow, we want to do things, we want to be bigger. But then when things come up, it's, it's like we're scared, like, oh, no, we can't do that. What if, what if, I want to hear the public's input, but I also want to vote on this, and we will have time to hear the public. If the public does not want it, go to the polls and vote and say that you do not want it, and then it'll go away.
And, and I think that, and I think, I, I think the majority of the council up here wants to put it on the ballot.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying? And that's why we dedicated all of those hours to get the state to do, to legislate this. So I'm not standing here that I'm against putting, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, and my, my promise to the city when I ran for mayor is that I'm going to be transparent. And this right, this, I want to make this a transparent, when, when, when the citizens of states will step into that ballot vote, I want them to know these are, we're going to have X amount of liquor stores, these are going to be the rules that's related to, and I don't want it to feel like they have to hurry up and, and figure it out. And it's just like when we did, you know, even with, with both of the supplies, the, the voters knew, okay, parks on there, public transportation is on there, they had a good idea, that's the only, I'm for them, that's why I worked on it, I worked on it, I did the work.
So let's.
You know what I'm saying, so, 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 so that being said, the only thing I'm saying is, let's be transparent in the process, let's get a lot of input, because I'm getting the same feedback, the same people are telling you, yeah, we want it, they're telling me, yeah, we want it. But I want to be transparent, and then, and the entire process, I don't want, and I'm telling you, when it comes to public policy, you don't rush it.
No, and I, I am learning that, and I am new here, but I also.
And six months, I'm sorry, but, but six months of public policy is not a long time at all.
I think we vote on a lot of things every other week that we rush. This is something big, and I do not want to rush it, but I feel that we will have the time to let the public know. And it's a simple question, do you want liquor or do you not want liquor? If, they will hear the buzz, they will know, we will have the meetings, they will be able to come and say, do you want it or do you not want it? If I ask everybody in the audience right now, do you want it, some people are raised, it's a simple question. And we will have the information to them, I do not want to do anything blindly, I don't want them to vote on it, and then it comes after a vote, oh, it's going to be a liquor store next to churches, because I don't want that. I want them to have all of the information before, but it's a simple question, and we will get them, Kane, and staff has said that the information can be to them.
Before voting?
Before voting, yes.
Yeah, so, so, so we're going, so the way this will work is that before we even get it to a first reading, um, you know, but what I want is, I want the, I want the legislative piece to be crafted, that's what I want. I want the legislation piece to be crafted, we know that we can throw it out there as an up or down vote, but I want them to know what it is that they're actually voting on.
Right.
That, and so, so we, and, and so we're not going to have the legislation crafted because we got to do a work session. So the earliest work session would be the second meeting of this month, right? And then once we come out of that work session, if there's anything that we have to craft out of that, then our staff have to take away and put back, now that's pushed us back. Now we back into July, two weeks later, it's got to be put all the ballot. And then, so by the time we get it to a first reading, there may be additional information. So now we've settled for October, and so now they got four weeks to decide, oh my, do, do we want this? And then we get it out in a timely fashion. What I would like to see in this process, because it is so sensitive to this city, is that I want to do town halls. I want us to be able to, I want us to talk to the business owners, I want us to talk to the stakeholders, the individuals that's in the substance abuse community. I want us to all sit down and discuss what does this look like specifically for the city of Statesboro? And we don't have the time to do that in a fashion that's, that, that's going to create a qual, a quality product, and then, and the public understands what that product is by the time November rolls around. Do I think we can do it, I mean, absolutely?
I think if we vote on it today, it'll give us, give us a little bit more time, instead of pushing it to the next meeting.
And Councilman Mac, too, uh, early voting doesn't actually start till.
October.
October, second week of October, third week, so we have four and a half months.
So early voting starts, start in, in mid-October, so we're going to have all of the legislation done by then, and.
Does it have to be done by then?
And we educate, and we educating the public on it, that's not going to happen.
Does it have to be done by then? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Sherry, it was your turn.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I, I should have asked you about that, Sherry.
But I'm after Sherry.
Yeah.
Thank you. Well, Phil, I appreciate the passion, I appreciate that folks up here care what our constituents think and are trying to take that into consideration and make the best decisions we can, that's what we got elected to do. So I appreciate that people care, and that's, that's why we're talking so much about it. I would just like to remind us to go back and see if there are other people in the room who have a statement to make. We got call my phone in the arm, discussion, and there may be others who have an opinion to share with us.
Is there anybody else with, I'm sorry, no, Paula's here, and then she's already told us, bye now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Does the legislation have to be crafted, this is a question for Kane, does it have to be crafted before placing on the ballot? That's a yes or no?
No.
No? No.
No, it doesn't.
Okay, so we put this on the ballot.
Okay, so we put this on the ballot, we still have, we can take as long as we want to craft the legislation, right?
Right.
We can take five years.
We can take five years. Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're actually under no obligation to.
So it can get placed on the ballot, pass and we don't have to do anything. As long as we want to. People can come, we can have as many meetings as we want before we put any type of ordinance in place.
Yeah.
To govern how many liquor stores we're gonna have, where they're gonna be placed. We can take our time to do that.
That's still, that's still.
Wait, 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 man, man, I'm, I'm speaking as soon. So we still have enough time to do that. Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. And, and, and here, and here, it's not, it's not a question of process. That's not, that's not the question is. The court, the, the thing that I'm concerned about is that when I, when they go to the ballot, when they go to the ballot and they vote, they don't know, they don't know the specifics of what they're voting on. Yes, we can craft it afterwards, but the afterwards pieces, after they've already crafted, a, after, after they've casted their vote. What if we create something after they vote that they do not agree with and they've already cast their ballot? That's what I'm saying, let's get the legislation piece to put together first. And then when they go to the ballot, they know exactly what they're, what they're voting for. Um, I'm sorry, I was gonna, I was gonna, Ms. Hodges was next.
No, I've just.
Marcus was.
Oh, I didn't see Marcus. I didn't see Marcus.
And, and Marcus is coming up. I'm just gonna make this statement. I, I have been to the polls since I was eighteen and there's a lot of stuff on the ballot sometimes that I don't know what it means. Um, but I read and I use my mind and then I just vote. And, you know, I, I don't know, go ahead, Marcus.
Uh, I won't, I won't state your name. Marcus Tool and I'm just representing myself today.
Okay.
We're not, we're not leaving any organization I might be affiliated with out of this. It's just my thoughts as a private citizen.
Okay.
Um, I have two thoughts. I, I don't have a big horse in this game, but I just wanna offer a little bit, couple of what I think are common sense things to this. One has to do is the when you hold the election. My thought is either have it this November or next November. Don't hold it in May 'cause if you hold it in May, you leave the college students out of it and I don't, I, I just, just from an equity perspective, that just seems wrong to me. It strikes me as wrong. Whether you do it this year or next year, I don't care, but let's not do it at a time when you don't have college kids here. The second thought I have is that there are two laws that just don't make any sense to me. Now, I'm not a liquor drinker. I occasionally have a beer. I occasionally have wine. But it's probably been ten years since liquor's touched my mouth. So I don't, this is not, this is not a personal issue for me, but there's two laws that don't make any sense to me from a safety issue. One is the, is the drunk pedestrian law, because that law encourages people to get in a car. And the other one is having a law where people have to drive all the way out to the county and then drive back to get their alcohol. Seems to me that we'll have less deaths on the highways if we, if people are able to sell alcohol, whatever they want, they can get it in Statesboro. And if they, and if they are drunk, they have the option of walking home. Those are my two cents. I'm not for alcohol or against alcohol. I just know that people are gonna get it and that I think, I think the law would make it safer.
Just a little bit of common sense, I like that, Marcus.
Hey, Kane, can I just, uh, regarding the question that's on the ballot, the law, state law requires us to ask that question and that question alone, right? We can't modify it, we can't add to it. So the question is, are you gonna allow the city to issue licenses? Yes or no? Regardless of what the law looks like, it, it actually doesn't take into consideration the ordinance craft itself, right? Second thing to, to, to discuss too is there is an election. John's not running. Uh, I'm running, the mayor's running. And so we, we could potentially have a different council come to the, well, I mean, we're gonna have at least one different councilman in two thousand twenty-two. That being said.
Or a woman.
Or a person, excuse me. Thank you, sorry, my apologies.
Good job, Phil.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm learning. Hey, man, I'm learning. It takes a minute. Old dogs, you know, new tricks, I kind of think, so, middle-aged dogs, I should say, not an old dog. But anyway, uh, um, my, my, my point is, that's the question. The, the question needs to go on the ballot just like that. Whether or not the ordinance, I mean, none of that honestly is a consideration for the referendum. The referendum is very specific and the state is very clear. Here's the question. And so we can put this out to the, I mean, all this is moot if the citizens say no. Why, you know, so let's just put it out to the citizens, see what they have to say and if they want us to move forward, we move forward. And if we don't, we don't. And we can, and like Paula says and like the mayor says, we can take as many ti, much time as we need and get as much input from folks as we want. We can take into consideration our business community, our university community, our, our substance abuse community, all those communities. But I mean, the, the, you know, there's, to some degree, there's almost no sense going down that road if, if the answer's no. But the only people that can tell us yes or no are the citizens. And it's, it's, it's up to us to, to put it before them, like we've done with the brunch bill, like we've done with Sunday alcohol sales, like we did with liquor by the drink. All these have been passed with referendums and didn't have nearly as much, uh, uh, consternation going through. So let's just, let's ask the voters what they want, put it before the citizens. If they say yes, we'll move forward. If they say no, we won't.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I apologize. That's not part of it, Phil. Um, I think I'm clear now on the position of everybody up here, of the council members and yourself, but I'd still like to see if there are other folks in the audience who didn't get a chance to speak yet. Please.
Come on up, we'll see you talking.
Well, I'm a public speaker and we weren't prepared today because of the short notice.
Tell us your name, Ms. Joyce.
My name is Joyce Stubbs and I'm the director of Bullock Alcohol and Road Council. And as most of you know, I would vote against it, this referendum, because our concern is underage drinking and, um, the availability. And when the more available you have alcohol, the more opportunity people have to drink. So, um, our data person that knows all the data and can vote you all the data for this is not here today because we had, you know, we just read the article in the paper and it was a holiday weekend and so, you know, I just think, I agree with the mayor that if we slow down, there's no rush. Um, then it would give people time, particularly us, to get our act together so that we could present our side of the argument.
Thank you.
Any, any further discussion by council or public?
Um, I think this is put in the cart before the horse. Is that right? Yeah, put in the cart before the horse if we don't have, if we don't have it all spelled out before we decide to put it on the ballot. I mean, 'cause some people will wanna know, you know, we're gonna have one big store, we're gonna have stores everywhere. Well, if I tell somebody, well, we're not gonna have stores everywhere, we're gonna have, you know, we're gonna keep it limited. Well, and then, uh, then this passes because of I said, me saying that. And then whoever comes and replaces me, it might be Al Capone. He might come in, oh, liquor stores on every corner. Uh, and it, it, I think before we even vote on it, it's, it's put in the cart before the horse. I think we need to have our discussions about what, what ordinance is gonna look like before we even think about putting it on the, on the ballot.
And we can have those, I'm sorry, we can have those conversations before. And I know you're saying whoever is gonna come after you can be somebody, but if you know us as a council, what we have done in this last year, we're not gonna let anything crazy get into the city because we do love the city of Statesboro. So in order to move forward, we just have to just move forward. So I do get that you want people to know and that's why if we vote on it, we can start having those conversations and those town halls and those work sessions that everybody wants to have and we can have that information. And trust me, when you're new, when the new person comes in, we're not gonna let them take over and do anything. We still have to vote on it.
Kane, Kane, let me, let me ask, let me ask you this. Um, is, is that, was, was a resolution the only way to get this on the ballot or was there a means to do this via a ordinance? No, 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 ordinance, I don't.
The, the actual state law, it says that it can be via, um, it can be via ordinance, resolution or petition. Um, that's, that's what it says in here. It's just via any ordinance or resolution. A lot of, a lot of jurisdictions, treat, will call resolution the way we call ordinances, whereas we specifically say that our ordinances are those that are within the code of ordinances or ones directly relating to it, such as an ordinance setting, you know, that are required under our code of ordinances.
Okay. So, so the ordinance, and I wanna understand this correctly. So the ordinance could have actually been crafted, um, via state policy um, and then put towards, um, and then motion towards, um, the ballot box.
The only, the only question that can go on the ballot is the one about.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I know, I know that, I know that, but on the city preparation side, we could have prepared the ordinance um, so that it's ready for, uh, whatever the ballot result may be, correct?
Oh, could we already have the ordinance, the code of ordinances? Yes. There's no prohibition before or after on that.
And that language is in there so that, so that the public at the municipal level would understand the, we would be able to get the clarity on that. That's why that's in there. So that when we was working on this, this is what we, that, that's why we were doing it, so that the public can be a full participant in it. Um, so with that, with that being said, um, with that being said, is there a motion from council at this time?
Yes, I will make a motion to approve Resolution two zero two one dash twenty-three.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Did you vote on it?
Give me some time, give me some time to think. This is a hard question. Oh, geez. Give me a moment.
There can be another motion where we put it, um, on the May twenty-fourth ballot or the November ballot, or the following November ballot. So another motion can enter.
Or this can be done in July. We can vote on this in July to put it on the ballot for, and we have up until July.
There's a motion in the second, there's a motion in the second on the floor.
Um, well, I'd like to enter my own motion. Um, I would like to motion to give me some more time to think. We bring this back up in July. That's what I'm motioning. Can I do that?
So do you wanna abstain?
You can't.
You can abstain, we can vote to table it, we can be a no vote.
I don't wanna vote to table it because I think it's something that needs to be addressed. I need more time to think about it. I don't like to be rushed in my actions. Um, but I don't wanna waste all year thinking about it. So that's why I wanna put it in.
So what you can do is abstain, um, it would be in time. I won't cast a, I won't cast a vote and then we'll have it passed down, bring it back up.
In July?
Yeah.
Is that gonna be no?
Uh, wouldn't a two vote be a no?
We just add it back to the agenda.
I don't think you can. Well.
Yeah, you can add it back to the agenda.
You would have to be somebody on the, on the, you would have to be Sherri or John, bring it up, put it back on.
I could put it on there.
Yeah, the mayor, the mayor is forced to vote in the event of a tiebreaker. Correct. And so the procedural way of doing what Councilor Schaefer says is suggesting would be a no vote and then it, then it's, then, then that, that motion would fail and then you can make a substitute motion.
Could she not make a substitute motion? Even with the motion on the floor, take a substitute motion to table the item to a time certain, which would be either the next meeting or the second meet, the first meeting in July or the second meeting in July. So it's not like it's dragging out. She can make a substitute motion.
Well, that's what I wanna, whatever that is, the language that is, I don't know what language that is. But my thing is, this is very important to me and before I decide on something, I need time to think about it. That's my thing and I think July is enough time for me to, to think.
Um, I will say I'm willing to withdraw my motion in, in consideration of voting at the next meeting. I don't wanna go till July. We talked about wanting to have time for the public. The sooner we get this and less folks know this is on the ballot, then sooner folks can start putting ads in the paper and start discussing and start calling their council members and start campaigning or doing whatever they need to do. And ultimately, it's up to the citizens whether or not we get to decide whether we do liquor stores or not. It's up to the citizens. So that's, John, when you say cart before the horse, that's the first step. This is the first step to getting it on the referendum, but whether the citizens say yes or no, that's the first step. 'Cause if they say no, we could spend six months working on this and then that's all moot. So, or they can say yes and then we can work on it then. So that is the first step, citizens. But anyway.
I disagree with that. I, I think we can have the ordinance first.
Yeah.
The state law is actually pretty clear. You, you can't vote on the ordinance. You can only vote on the question.
Phil, we know that, we know the only thing that's gonna be on the ballot is do you want package sales or not.
That's right.
What we are saying as a, as a governing body is that we wanna present the ordinance so that the people know when they go vote, whether they want it, want it or not, they know what the ordinance looks like. So let's quit going in that circle.
What, I, this is, this is, this is what I would like, as I stated before. I want to make my own decisions based upon research that I've done. I need a little more time to do that, okay? Because I understand both sides. I really do. Can we give me some more time? That's what I'm asking for. Just a little more time.
Can I ask your question? It's a decision of whether it should be on the ballot or in the time period it should be on the ballot. Because I.
No, it's not.
I also agree it should be on the ballot.
I agree it should be on the ballot.
Yeah. Every, well, everybody, I think, I think three, four, five.
I like the process though. I have to process it before I make a decision. And I don't care what anybody says up here. I wanna process, okay? So I'm asking if I can get a little more time to process this decision because I need processing. Is that clear?
Sure.
That's clear.
That's what I'm asking for.
We, we need one more time to win, Paula.
To win, Paula.
It's June now.
When do you want it?
Can, can we get the last meeting in June?
Next meeting.
Last meeting, yes. We can get that.
I, I am willing to withdraw my motion and, uh, enter a different motion to table this item until the next meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'm not voting.
Okay. You, you abstaining?
So, did they pass that? They got it.
Now, mind you, if you vote, if you don't vote to table it, then it doesn't table and we have to consider it now. That's how it works.
Yeah, we, we had three people to vote to table it.
I'm just, I just wanted to point that out. I mean, just 'cause you don't vote doesn't mean you can't.
Thank you, though. Uh, I make a motion that we have a work session before the next meeting on alcohol.
We are, yeah, we are.
But I say we now have.
The work session, the work session, the second work session of this month, yeah.
Is, is already planned to be on?
Well, you know, housing is supposed to be on that one.
We, we would just need to, we will start it, we start it early, Mayor.
Okay.
Because the housing will take up significant time, but we, we'd have enough time to go at least two hours, maybe two and a half hours, then we start at three.
Okay.
Start at three.
Three o'clock on the fifteen?
And I would like to encourage the public that if you guys have a voice or you have an opinion, please come and voice your opinion. And for council, if anybody wants any chance to be on the work session, please let that be known. And guys, do your research. We have two weeks, so when we get these papers, we have to look at them and research and do what we have to do.
Do we need a second, John's motion? There's a motion on the floor?
No, I, I, I'll, I'll withdraw that.
So it is being tabled?
Yes, being tabled.
All right.
All right, so with that being said, we'll move down to agenda item eleven. Uh, consideration of motion to approve approaches of a rescue jack stabilization struts from vehicle still LLC in the amount of twenty-nine thousand five hundred and ninety-six dollars. Mr. Penney?
Mayor, uh, this is, this is a replacement item for the fire department for, um, um, rescuing extrication, uh, from accidents and so, uh, rescue jack, um, um, vehicle still is a sole source, so we do recommend approval of.
Any discussion, my council? Seeing that there's none of the motion to approve. Seeing that there's none of the motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I can move down to agenda item twelve, consideration of a motion to award a contract to CNH Pipeline Incorporated in the amount of sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars to install approximately three thousand feet of four-inch PE gas main along Old Register Road. This project is funded in part of, part of the twenty-twenty-one CIP budget item number NGD eighty-seven with funds from system revenues. Um, any further insight, Mr. Penney?
Mayor, we just recommend the project to, uh, with the growth of Georgia Southern. This is gonna help us to be able to serve in the expanded, uh, area and businesses that might come up in that area, so we do recommend approval of the contract.
Alright, thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we move down to agenda item thirteen, consideration of a motion to approve award a contract to frontier communication in the amount of eighty-four thousand dollars and authorize mayor to execute contract documents for utility relocation associated with the intersection improvement project at South Zedderaw Avenue and Steelwell Street intersections.
Again, Mayor, we recommend it to you, we made some improvements in that intersection, and so you have some utility relocation, and this is part of that, which can be a very difficult job in getting, especially the telecommunication folks to relocate. As if we do recommend approval of eighty-four thousand dollar frontier in order to get this worked out.
Alright, thank you, any discussion by council? Seeing that there's none of the motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's move down to agenda item fourteen, consideration of a motion, uh, to award contract to Bullet Solutions in, uh, in the, in the not to exceed the amount of one hundred five thousand four hundred twenty-two dollars and thirty-two cent. Authorize the mayor to execute contract documents for telecommunication and security infrastructure for the Loretta Moore Park and Grady Street Park improvements project, uh, Mr. Penney?
Mayor, members of council, at the last meeting, I told you this was gonna be coming. This is going to get internet to Loretta Moore and the Grady Street, plus for the security cameras that we will have at both locations, and we do recommend it to you, as I told you at the last meeting, I was in it, I was anticipating this hundred thousand dollar, uh, cost coming forward too, so we do recommend it to you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Penney, any discussion by council?
Yes, um, I didn't notice it in there, but are we purchasing the connectivity so that the police will have access to these cameras live?
We, we're working with the police department.
I see a thumbs up, so, and that's all I need to know. Cause, alright, that's, will they be able to buy just one piece of equipment, or they might have to buy a couple of them, I guess?
Yes, one per park.
One per park, okay, cool, thanks.
Yeah, this, that, that reminded me that this month is two years since PJ has been killed, and we, and we still have not found, solved that murder in one of our parks. This month makes two years. Um, is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Move down to agenda item fifteen, uh, consideration of a motion to approve change orders twelve and sixteen with Lavender and Associates Incorporated not to exceed the amount of twenty-four thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars for the Loretta Moore Park and Grady Street Park improvements project, authorize the mayor to execute contract documents, uh, document amendments, Mr. Penney?
Mayor, members of council, part of this is to ensure that we can get some conduit in, which is gonna be required for some of the fiber work. Um, but also, uh, as we make the improvements to the park, what we are striving to do is to ensure that when people look at the parks, they see new parks. Uh, and so we don't wanna leave something undone, and at Loretta Moore, over on the side where the little, little ball field is, there's a, a building we're gonna replace the fence, so you took care of that the last time, but there's a little building, uh, that, the, the siding is bad, uh, and the roof needs, uh, shingles need to re- replace. So we're gonna match all that with what's over in the Carol Love Jones Building and what will be in the pool area, so it all looks uniform and it looks like a new park when it's finished. And so we do recommend approval of this change order for twenty-four thousand five hundred and forty-three dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Penney, any discussion by council? Seeing that there's none of the motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, move down to agenda item sixteen, consideration of a motion to award a contract to Sykes Brothers Incorporated in the amount of nine hundred eighty-five thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy-five cent in the annual resurfacing project and approval to, uh, spend up to the budgeted amount of one billion sixty-three thousand six hundred eighty-six dollars and thirty-two cent uh, for additional work based on unit prices and contractors bid. This project is paid by G-Dot L-Mid Funds in two thousand eighteen T-SPLS funds. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we'll move down to agenda item seventeen, consideration of a motion to award, uh, a contract to timber construction for the municipal court overflow PD parking lot expansion project in the base bid amount of ninety-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and approval to spend up to one hundred and eleven thousand dollars for additional work based on prices and contractors bid. Project is to be paid for with twenty-thirteen T-SPLS funds, uh, Mr. Penney?
Mayor, members of council, if you go down to the police department at the corner of Grady and College Street, uh, there's an unpaid parking lot, and all we simply wanted to do is improve it, put landscape in, so it looks nice, and so we do recommend that you authorize us to spend up to the hundred and eleven thousand dollars and award a contract, uh, to timber linear construction for this improvement.
Which, which corner are we talking about?
So, it's, it's really right next to the police department, at the corner of Grady and College Streets.
That was paid.
The, not just parking lot.
It's paid, but then there's one.
There's a, there's a building that sits right next to, and it's unimproved. What, what we normally do during Christmas, that's where we set the, um, robe off, so we can bring the, um, uh, can bring, um, um, paper and stuff and dispose of it, but that's gonna be resurfaced.
Thank you. Alright, and so, um, is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Like, we move down to agenda item eighteen, uh, other business from city council, was there any other business from city council?
Uh, yeah, Mayor, just a, um, one quick thing, uh, where did I have my notes? Um, with, with today's being a, the day after a holiday, and typically in the past, we've pushed our council meeting to that Wednesday, and we've got two more Monday holidays, and this is so staff doesn't have to do work, you know, cause clearly they're getting, uh, clearly they're getting the, the, the end of their, their, you know, their, spending Monday afternoon, probably organizing their stuff for a morning meeting. And we've got two more Monday, or Tuesday meetings following a Monday holiday, and I'd like to push those back one day. So it would be the July sixth meeting pushing it back to July seventh, and then the September sixth meeting pushing it back to September seventh. That way there's a full workday before, uh, we have our council meeting. Just again, so staff isn't having to work on their holidays, you know what I mean, that's not fair to them, so. I appreciate it, don't say nothing I'm wanting, you know?
I agree with that.
Thank you, so, I don't know if we have a, do we need to?
I work on those days, so.
I'm saying that, I, I, I got several jobs.
Me too, but I mean.
Yeah, like, that's part of the, you know, they, they do something, I'm telling me, John, we know. We don't want to do the work on that day, so.
I'm okay to do one, but I don't, I'm not comfortable with going both, because I have a job that I have to work to.
We're just, we're just moving into a Wednesday.
Yeah, I work on Wednesdays.
Okay, this has been something we've done for years as a consideration.
Yeah, I'm okay with one, I just, I'm, or maybe I can.
Work is work, yeah, like, I'm doing something that's not saying we wanna give you a break on your job. So, so with that being said, let's, uh, does, is there any further discussion, uh, for, um, city council, for city business, council business?
I appreciate Mr. Boyer thinking about it, and I always like to look out for staff, and I plan my calendar around first and third Tuesdays, so I, I can see both sides of that. I mean, I can make changes if it's really, the staff feels like you need it, um, but I always have things planned the rest of the year, I mean, so, which Tuesdays?
Yeah, I'm asking you now. Well, 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 if you're saying staff don't need it, then we ask you, if you're saying staff does need it, then we not ask you.
I, I appreciate the consideration, however, when we have Tuesdays meetings after holidays, we prepare before we leave.
Okay.
And so that we, we know we're gonna come in, and, and, and so we're okay. Uh, we get our agenda stuff out, and, and it's just a matter of, I know I'm an old man, but I'm just ready to roll on Tuesday morning at, at nine o'clock. Do whatever y'all need us to do.
Thank you, Mr. Penney, alright, uh, any city manager comments?
Yeah, Mayor and council, I had, um, about three things I just wanted to mention to you. Uh, Uconnect will start next week, so we need to make sure we get y'all on the schedule. Uh, most of the training is gonna take place over in the big area.
Okay.
Uh, I think we'll be using the conference room over there. Would like to tell you, we had, we selected twenty young people, uh, high school students, and Demetrius hasn't broken out, I don't have all of the numbers. But I, I wanna tell you one story that I think is real important. Uh, one of the things that's really critical for this is, is in mentoring these young people and being able to put them in a position so that they're successful, not going forward. We had one young person that was so bashful that that young person could not interview. And, and when Demetrius told me that, I was like, that person needs our program. So, we were able to go back and get that young person to be a part of our program. We talked with the, the mother and the young person, and so that's the, that's the beauty of what, of what you're, what you're doing. And so I just wanted to share that with you. Uh, the June work session, I was just gonna mention, housing, we're gonna take ninety minutes to talk about housing uh, and get the document corrected, we'll send it out to you in advance so you can read it. Uh, but it's, it's good information, it's good data about our community and what the future looks like for our community as far as housing is concerned. But I did send out to you in, in the memo, uh, that the way we were planning is that we wouldn't have a work session unless council deemed it necessary in July, just to give, just to give staff a break then. Uh, but, but again, we'll do whatever council needs us to do. Uh, and then the last thing I just wanted to mention to you is that we're still learning about the American Rescue Plan, but hopefully in the next, in the next month, I'll be in a position that I can give you a recommendation on how we should, uh, spend these funds as soon as we know it. Today, I can't even tell you how much money we're actually gonna get, because that has not been shared with us. And the, when the original numbers came out, it said something about ten point three million dollars. But when they, when the government released some of the numbers, uh, some, especially the entitlement communities, the numbers had changed. So that's why we're very, being very cautious about what, what we're doing, uh, as far as, uh, uh, the American Rescue Plan is concerned. And then the last thing I wanna just mention to you, we had a great meeting with, uh, Food Insecurities Committee, uh, last, um, week, uh, and with Don Poe and with the folks from the food bank, uh, and, and we're moving forward, and the county was involved in that discussion uh, because they're gonna be displaced, uh, with the senior housing that's gonna, that's gonna come. But, uh, we'll keep you posted and share with you some of the discussions that are coming out of that meeting. Uh, and with that, that's, that's all for me today.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I did have two comments, I'm sorry, it's slow getting them, um, Mr. Penny's comment reminded me, it's a good time to congratulate all of our area graduates, here it is, the first of June, and we have a lot of, a lot of young people taking the next step, and we're really proud of them, and send out congratulations. The other thing, I'm looking around and I'm not seeing very many masks, and I'm, I'm so pleased that more of us are vaccinated and that our numbers are down, but I always wanna sign a sound, a cautionary note. There are those among us who can't be vaccinated, there are those among us who just haven't gotten there yet, and some areas are seeing a resurgence, so encourage folks, if you haven't yet been vaccinated and you can, please go be vaccinated. We don't wanna be one of those hotspots again that it comes back on, so pay attention. Squash the Spread's still active, there are clinics coming up, you can get vaccinated lots of places, if you don't know where, call me, call City Hall, we'll point you in the right direction.
Thank you.
I also wanna, Dolly, what she said, just, I am fully vaccinated, but I choose to stay masked, so just because you're vaccinated doesn't mean that you have to take the mask off. So don't be bullied into taking your mask off if you don't want to.
Absolutely. You can have a conflict, you have a mask conflict.
That's awesome, but I'm still wearing my mask.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
It's like an honor system, you know, people can say they're vaccinated, but you can't really ask.
Yeah, we don't supposed to ask.
Just keep a mask on.
And we still at twenty percent in both counties.
And the numbers are low in Bullet County for people who have gotten vaccinated.
Yeah, that's, 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 that's a big concern, but I, I do wanna, um, uh, and I think our councilwoman, uh, Barr alluded to it, but on the nineteenth, um, we're setting up vaccination stations across the city. Um, and this is a great collaboration with Squash and the Spread, uh, Core. Uh, we got another organization that's coming out of Savannah, uh, that's doing something, that's helping us as well. So that's gonna be, um, on the nineteenth, that, you know, individuals can come up at, hopefully grocery stores, uh, and be able to get vaccinated. So, uh, we definitely wanna continue to push that, but thank, thank, thank y'all for everything you're doing.
We can also note that the food bank, even though they're about to have to relocate, Food Bank and Rebecca's Cafe are gonna host a vaccine clinic, and they're actually offering people who show up at their clinic a five-dollar cash thank you for helping the whole community by getting vaccinated, having to protect us all. I wish I had that back to share with you, but I don't have it in front of me, but, but stay, pay attention to social media, it'll be widely publicized.
Well, as I say, I know this sounds strange, but, uh, vaccines are free, people. Don't, don't, don't.
How much they cost?
Free. Free ninety-nine, that's right.
Free ninety-nine.
Free ninety-nine, I, I mean, I, I say that, and I know we laugh about it, but I mean, there are scams out there right now, there are people that think they have to pay. You, I mean, all these places that have it, whether it's East Georgia, uh, Georgia Southern, CVS, wherever, they're free. So don't think that, don't let money be an issue to not get your vaccine.
I'm, I'm sorry, we never wanna get out, we just keep saying stuff, but I also wanted to touch on that, uh, the school board is doing free lunches for the summer for kids, so if you have a child from, I believe it's zero to eighteen, they have five different locations where you can go and pick up lunches, um, for the week. I do not know, I know Sally Zee was one, uh, Julie P. Byrne, I don't have the whole list, but I will post it on my social media today. Um, it's already there, but I will repost it, so if you have children and you need some lunches, they're not answering any questions or anything, you just go and pick up your lunches and I'll give you, I believe, breakfast and lunch for the week, so you'll get ten meals in one day. So today is actually the first day, and then it'll be every, uh, Monday afternoon, so you guys take advantage of that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I found the date, Rebecca's, Rebecca's Cafe Food Bank will be on Thursday, the tenth of June, so just a couple of weeks from now. Thursday, the tenth of June, from ten till twelve, at the Rebecca's Cafe Food Bank location on Dotty Simmons Way.
My word, thank you.
Good job, Miss. Okay, um, any public comments? Alright, seeing that there's none, is there a need for executive session? Alright, seeing that there is none.
Yeah, for personnel.
No, I find know what she talking about. Thank you, Leah. Alright, so, um, so the consideration of a motion to air into executive session to discuss personnel matters, um, in accordance with OCGA, uh, fifty dash fourteen dash three B. Alright, is there a motion?
Certainly.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.